And we will go around the room introducing ourselves, starting down that way with Joe.
I'm Joe Aikstead, city engineer.
Ryan Austin, council member.
Dean Benhaman, council member.
Matt Zachar, Alderman District Three.
Tom Rayom, District Four Alderman.
Jennifer Gosick, City Clerk.
Jake Hattonon, District Five Alderman.
Dennis Spahn, Six Word Alderman.
Patrick Delaney, District Seven Alderman.
Jay Bemke, District Eight.
Shane Blazer, Mayor.
Sue Shell, City Attorney.
Thank you. We'll start the meeting with the rail study. Rail study discussion. And I'll turn it over to Joe.
So I did put together kind of a basic list of our potential discussion topics, anyway. But I guess the highlight for this evening is that we have Patrick Engineering and Link Things on Zoom. Provide an opportunity to ask questions and have them speak on their portions of the rail feasibility study that they completed in February of this year. So from Patrick Engineering, we have Earl Whacker and Tim O'Connor. And then from Link Things, Kurt Brandt. And I mean, certainly if anybody in the council has questions that they'd like to ask right of way, could certainly do that. Otherwise, I did have a few questions that I provided to them to, you know, at least get the conversation started, or, you know, any other summary or highlight information that they wanted to go through. But perhaps maybe if they, not sure if they, one of them wants to start, otherwise Patrick Engineering could, could start.
Thanks, Joe. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry, was somebody speaking?
Nope. Nope, that's good. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. So my name is Earl Whacker. I'm the, I'm the project manager for Patrick Engineering. And as Joe mentioned, he provided us a few questions that we'll try to answer that hopefully answers many of your questions. But besides myself, Tim O'Connor is on from Patrick. He was the engineer on the project and knows a lot of the specific details about, you know, how we developed our cost estimate, alignment and things. And as Joe mentioned, Kurt Brandt from Link Things. So the first question Joe had asked was if the city was to pursue an overpass or underpass or rail relocation, what would be the construction, anticipated construction year? Assuming we maybe have to get funding from either state or the federal sources through grants of some type. The simple answer to that question, and I just agree about as high level as you could possibly get, I came up with the assumption that it's probably about a seven-year timeline. There are a number of factors that weigh into that. It's pretty simple to assume, you know, you can do a feasibility study in six months. You could do preliminary design in a year, final design in a year, preliminary design to support the development, include your environmental. Probably one of the biggest unknowns is the grant application process. Process itself may not take long, but depending on what grant you identify that you want to pursue, you have to wait till they come out with a proposal, which does not happen on a regular basis. For example, one of the biggest programs that the Federal Railroad Administration uses is something called a Chrissy Grant, Consolidate Rural Infrastructure and Safety of Movement. And grade separation fits that quite nicely, but they don't come out with it on any regular basis. In fact, there's times where they go a year and a half without even offering the exception applications. So that's pretty much an unknown. Of course, there's other federal grants available. Beyond that, the construction is probably a two-season inspection. So you add all them up with the assumption that the grant process is at the most years of the federal government, probably within a seven-year time. The question was for a rail overpass or underpass or rail relocation. I think the other point is underpass timeline is one of those identical. Very little difference between one and the other, the impact, which is up to costs or different. The timing is that. The rail relocation, I think, from my perspective and my experience, would take much longer. And the reason I say that is you would need a lot more cooperation and support from the railroad. It's possible the railroad would have no interest in even entertaining rail. It's very hard to put any, the timeline, certainly wouldn't be less than the seven years. And almost one of the, one of the things, longer than the seven years. The next question asked was what kind of experience do we have with grants and these types of rail projects? Patrick has developed a lot of code answer for, for Link Things, if you'd like. But Patrick has done a couple of successful planning grants for grade separations. We've got the Bonnington and the preliminary engineering and final experience. We've regularly partnered with a couple of small firms, which is part of the answer to the next question Joe asked about having grant writers on staff or both companies. The answer is yes, but, and we've designed and built a number of highway grade separations where railroad over or railroad under. Again, it's a very similar process. When the railroad goes over, you involve the railroad a little bit more because you're basically building a bridge for the railroad. This time, we can was over railroad, basically remains intact. It's a much simpler process from our perspective. And then the last question Joe asked, just given what we know today, what's our recommended course of action? So in our feasibility study, we talked about some short-term solutions. We've seen the software solution, there's a short-term solution. Quiet zones are something that's worth pursuing, although even quiet zones are fairly expensive because you've got a lot of crossings that have no, like gate crossings, crossing protection right now. And for quiet zones, it's every crossing has to have active warnings, meaning flashers, lights, and things to be rather expensive. Longer term, the grade separation is the more obvious. One more, again, kind of a moot point, the study would determine what makes more sense, the local impacts. Costs can weigh into it at the environmental level, they don't look at cost. The rail relocation, from my perspective, it's probably worth one meeting with the railroad, seeing if there's even a lot of interest. My guess is there's not. And, you know, if they're not interested, the timeline that I suggested really, you could throw out the window. But I'd spend, I'd spend a very short amount of time talking to the railroad about that and then pursue one of the grade separation options. And those are the questions, Joe, that you have provided to me. Any other questions for Patrick, or if you prefer, for Kurt to talk for a minute, whatever you'd like to do, Joe.
Okay. There's 14, I guess, listed as alternate options. Could you speak specifically to alternate two-one and two-two? And what that would entail? So it notes that there's technology innovation that would go with that. So what, what is that? What does that look like?
Confirm your, your solutions, bro.
All right. Okay, that one. Hi, thank you everybody for your time, your questions. Yeah, so the technology solution, and if anyone is interested, I can show them a quick slide. Why that, but I'll talk to her first. So what's involved in that is we put up a network of sensors, we call travel sensors, because they have a variety of sensor technologies built into them that can be modified through software. These sensors include radar, lidar, magnetometer, audio, and it identifies a train's location, speed, length, and differentiates it from other objects with a high degree of accuracy. And the information is then used with, in conjunction with machine learning models, which identify which crossings are going to be closed and open, and at what time they're going to be open. And the idea behind this, we call it predictive mobility. So it's, one distinction is it's not that you get to the crossing and go some other place. The idea is that it gives you the information in advance, if you never end up at a crossing that is blocked by a train, because you're always given an advanced warning of an alternate route. The information can be communicated to users in multiple ways. We have applications, some mobile applications, which are Android, Apple, and Microsoft. There's also cloud integration, so that means that to connect to, for example, emergency response software systems, which requires some integration outside. And we're also working on getting this introduced into common mapping programs and autonomous vehicle infrastructure. And then the third area that can be communicated to users is through variable message signage that's put on the road. So this gives immediate access to everybody, whether they have an application or a modern vehicle, or they use navigation or not. So there's three, three different ways that we communicate the data. That's kind of the high overview of how, how it works. And there's lots more details I can share, but maybe if there's some other questions about it, I can answer those specifically.
That was a great explanation, Mr. Brandt. Thank you for that. I think, in particular, if you wanted, for myself, if there's anything you could send over that would provide further detail on that, I think that was great. I would just say to the, the city and the rest of the council here, I mean, that is where my support is, is finding some options such as alternate two or alternate two-two, in which we would use technology and innovation to do what Mr. Brandt described there, which would be make that information available to others. These, these other projects that are looking at an overpass or underpass and are millions and millions of dollars, and some of them on here even add up to almost what the entire city budget is for a year, I, I just don't think it's going to be viable. So I think we would save everyone a lot of time if we focus more in on that area. And as Mr. Brandt described, I think that everybody having those car navigation systems and the phones in their pocket, a lot of this can be alleviated with that information being live in a system, as he described.
And answer some of the other questions that Joe had put out there as well. The live application up and running in Wisconsin Rapids is very limited. We have two sensors out there, so if you get an idea how it works, there is application available. I can send links so people can try it out and see how it works. So that is available. We have implementations in four cities, and they're various, various stages. They, all of them are successful in terms of the technology and data. Where, where we found additional challenges, and I think, you know, overcome these. For example, some of these projects were started by the IT department, and then they didn't, they said, yeah, we'll take care of the poles, and then that was not exactly how that works. So we ended up going and getting, you know, externally funding on and putting in poles and things like that. So those are the kind of things that we've run into in the past. And that's really the, the biggest hurdle we've encountered. The other thing is making sure that there is a solid plan to rule this out to citizens and somebody that's in charge of that on the city side, and we can help in all different ways. But still need a, like a person that is the champion on that side.
I've got a question on predictive mobility, switching activities. Is that communicated by CN to, to this application? Or, you know, that's a lot of the reason why we have some of the issues, especially on West Grand, is, is some of the switching activities that happen. And is the, I understand the data that you guys collected down rail, but are those activities also communicated?
Yeah, we, of course, that is a, a important issue. In places like Grand Avenue and the crossing just south of that, which three, the majority of activity actually is switching activity at those crossings. We, we don't get that information from CN, but we do collect that information and machine learning identifies the difference between through traffic and switching traffic. And so we have different ways of communicating that information. And we've done some, we've been collecting data in, in Wisconsin Rapids for something like nine months now. So we have a really good picture of what that looks like. And some of those delays are an hour long, going with cars, train stopping on the crossing, et cetera. And once they stop, we can't really tell how long it will be before they start again. But we can tell you that it's blocked and they're not moving. So that's the kind of information that we give now, and that's, that's still pretty valuable.
And you had mentioned the applications, Apple, Microsoft. You're also proposing physical signage, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's certainly an option. And the, of course, the advantage of that is that people that aren't using digital applications will have access to it. The other piece of it is that, for example, Highway 13, it's not clear how much traffic coming through town is people from out of town, and they may not know about the application in advance. So the variable message signage helps provide true car traffic with a solution which they may not be aware of until, until the city.
Yeah, I would picture, like, highway traffic or, or those types of routes would, would receive this type of signage. I wouldn't think, like, a typical city street would get something like that. More of the main through affair, is that correct, accurate?
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's really different types, but yeah, I think that's the general rule. Depends on how much traffic and the kind of traffic. And so what we typically do before we do variable message signage is do a, what's called a origin destination study. So you can look at the traffic and see what the traffic flows are and where they come from, and that's really how we look at where the sign should go. And so smaller roads might get something very simple, like a fixed sign with maybe a blinking light, whereas larger, roads with more traffic may get something more sophisticated, like an actual message sign that, where the message can change. And the costs differ.
Thank you. I'll echo Jake's statement about predictive mobility. And I do think that there's a lot of value potentially here, and could save a lot of headache for our residents. But I will say, grade separation is the ultimate fix to this problem. And I don't agree that that's totally on the city. That would have to be in concert with the state as well as CN. So I don't think that entire financial burden would end up on the city if something was put in place on the road. Thank you.
Yep. For those watching and, and myself, what is that current app called that is in place right now in use that was mentioned?
Any questions?
The, you mentioned there's an application that is currently available, although it may have some limitations compared to adding the predictive mobility. What is that application called? So people can dive.
No, it is a predictive mobility application. It's only limited because there's a limited number of sensors installed in, in Wisconsin Rapids. There's only two sensors. So it just gives you a small piece of information. It's not the whole city.
Yeah, that's right. What's, what's the app called?
Okay.
What's the application called in the App Store?
If Link Things, it's not in the App Store, I can give you direct links to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think predictive mobility obviously is the way to go, but it would seem, I understand app, and, but it would seem signage is critical for this.
The other, of course, the other piece of this is that, that even, even with a bridge in place, you have 16 crossings. So I think the, the, the grade separation offers you another alternate route, and that's definitely a positive thing. But there, there are 16 crossings, so it doesn't really help all of those crossings, but it would help the one with the primary amount of traffic, which is Grand Avenue with 10,000 cars a day or something like that, which is significantly more than, than the other crossings in the city.
Anybody else?
Yeah. In regards to the grade separation, it's in the document. The two alternates that include grade separation are $32.6 million and $33.6. Ryan, you had mentioned that some of this would be on the state, I guess. How much would they contribute? How much would we be looking at contributing? So that when we're looking at what direction we might go here, there's a cost associated with each one.
You want to take that, Joe?
Yeah, so we did reach out to the DOT to discuss that just initially, just on an introductory basis. The state doesn't currently have, I mean, they're kind of neutral on the position at this point. Neither in favor nor against it. Currently, the, the, the state budget inability to, to do work on the connecting highways is, is limited. It's what they shared with us, and it's certainly our experience, you know, with A Street and the, and the expressway. But they said to keep them in, you know, as part of the conversation moving forward. And so I did try to set up a meeting with Canadian National. We're still bouncing around trying to find a date, and I was hoping sometime, in fact, I was hoping today, earlier before this meeting. But we'll continue to try to get a meeting scheduled with them and introduce the project and just get some initial feedback from them as well.
Thank you. Item, or, in the rail study discussion agenda, number two says that there would be an 80/20 cost share with the DOT. But the DOT has verbally stated the first round of applications needs to have a contract signed or funds encumbered by September 30th.
Yeah, so, so the DOT in regards to the grade separation, that was, that was the comments about some, a large capital project that they're, they're neither in favor of nor against. In regards to the discussion item with the carbon reduction grant, it is an 80/20 cost share. It is something that became available, I think, in April. And it was available for like a three-week period to submit an application. So we, we did put one together and submitted it specifically for the predictive mobility, largely because that fit the eligibility criteria. They didn't want any lane expansions or any physical hard improvements as part of that grant application. So the alternate two, two-dash-one, two-dash-two, or two-dash-three, we applied for the two-dash-three, which was the full, the full application, you know, full build-out of a predictive mobility system. And the DOT did get back to us that they would fund that project. So it is using federal funds at an 80/20 cost share, so 20% local cost. The costs that we had put into the application, looking a little bit more closely at the signs and just making sure we had enough dollars in there, I think it came to close to $550,000. So 80% of that is, would be funded, although there is a limitation in this first round of funding on when those funds need to be committed by, which is actually September 30th of this year. So given that, I've, I do have a few options listed there as far as ways to, in incremental order on how, you know, a deadline like that could be kind of streamlined. And, you know, that may or may not end up forfeiting some funds or, you know, having to carve out a specific project to meet that timeline. But there is an additional round of funding that we could reapply for, for 2024.
Thank you. The one thing that, I wouldn't say concerns me, but that is, I would be weary of in that process is the fact that we need to have a contract signed before we even find out if we're going to receive the grant. So would, would we be able to delay a project until grant money was available? Or do we sign a contract and then potentially we're, if the grant money doesn't come through, we don't, it's not even 80/20, it would be 100%.
So it is, so they've selected our application.
Okay.
It's, it's not under agreement yet. And in fact, you know, so the, the state does what's called the state municipal agreement. So they, they put it, put the entire agreement together. We'd usually bring it back to the council, we'd review it, you know, approve, approve that document if it was something we wanted to pursue and continue forward with. And, and then subsequent to that, we'd start to encumber the funds and, and go through the process. But that, in this particular case, that state municipal agreement wouldn't be available until August. And so it, it is a really compact timeline in this case. But the project is selected. So, I mean, the DOT did notice us about a week ago, maybe a little over a week, week ago, that our project was selected and would be approved for funding. But there's some limitations on the timeline and schedule.
So alternate, alternate two-three is approved. No other alternates are. Is that what we're pursuing then, alternate two-three?
That's what we applied for. I guess any, any other alternative number two could be, likely be approved. So I mean, if, rather than a citywide type of installation, you know, if it's a digital-only or some smaller scoped project, that could probably still be approved through that grant process.
Okay. Thank you. So in regards to what sounds like it's already approved, and what I would support in these 14 options, I would, it's still going to be around $100,000 just for that, the 80/20, or, you know, it will be somewhere up in that range. It's, it's going to cost money. But if, if you look at an 80/20 for a grade separation, I mean, we're getting up around $7 million. So I would just make everyone aware of that. If, if that's the route that we are looking to go versus the alternate two-three, which is approved, we have to find that $7 million, or we're going to have to bond for it, which we talk about all the time in the debt and paying it off. So outside of all this information, that's really how I break it down, is which, which route are we going to go? Because at the end of it, there's some money that needs to go somewhere for it. And I, I think as of now, where we stand on alternate two-three and the approval of that and the costs, I think we should keep pursuing that. So whatever, I, I don't know what you need from the council to keep doing that, or if we're just going to get updated. But I guess those are my thoughts on it.
Ryan?
I guess to update the council a little bit, I've been given the name of a federal legislator's aide who attends all the CN-type train, train meetings in Washington DC. So I'll be reaching out to him to kind of make that connection. A grade separation, I think, is, you know, the, the best alternative. However, I, I think it's probably unfortunately the least realistic financially. But, you know, every, every couple of years, we get legislators reach out to us to find out. to find out potential earmark projects to put in for. And I think of the grade separation, it, I think it meets, you know, their criteria where it has a federal nexus with railroad. And, you know, I think that's something, you know, obviously I'm going to pursue and work on with our federal, federal legislators. I've already talked, initially talked to Joe about it because, you know, with the intersection of the two state highways there, you know, if we can get some state participation in it. But I think ultimately it's going to, probably going to have to come down to, realistically, to a federal project. I, I just don't see the state giving us thirty million dollars. Like, like Joe pointed out, we can't even get A Street done for a couple of million. So I'm, just to let you know, that's what I'm working on from that end. And, uh, this next, uh, shortly here, I'll be getting ahold of this gentleman from Washington and kind of building that relationship there. Just an update for you.
Yeah, I guess realistically, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Patrick, you were first.
I just wanted to go back to this application. You had said that there is one currently, um, available that you could send us the link to. Could you read that link by any, by any chance?
Or could we put it on the city website?
Yes.
So Joe, this isn't an active link that people can use. It was just kind of a test run, right?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
It's not meant to be a public.
More of a demo.
Yeah, no, it's meant to be just, I think, a test run so they could kind of test it out versus a, a link that, right, because it's just kind of a, a concept right now.
Pardon me? I don't, I don't recall if, if Kurt had sent that to me or not. I don't have it offhand anyway. If it, it might be buried in my email somewhere. But it is, um, I've, I've at least seen screenshots of it. And, um, you know, so the, the data that it's collecting, I think there's, he said there's two trailers, sensor trailers still in town. And so it's, it's limited data that's available and presented in that, that application. But certainly, um, uh, get that to the, to the council and at least you can look at it and see. The last time that we had met officially, as I think the committee, the whole, there was, there was still those applications, I think, were available on Apple and they were just coming out on, um, Android and, and Microsoft products. So it sounds like those are, those are out and available at this point, but.
Hi, this is Kurt Brand. If, if you want to see what the Microsoft version looks like, I could show it right now because they, I can run it on the computer. I can share it if that's of interest.
Sure, yeah.
I'd be interested in that. And while he, while he's bringing that up, could I just ask something to clarify for the public? So if we went forward with option or alter- alternate two, three, that would give us the ability to have that mobile application or access it on the web or put it in car navigation system like Mr. Brand had spoke about earlier? Is that what, that, my understanding is that's what's in that alternate, correct?
Yeah, the, the application plus the roadside signage, both of those were part of that alternate two, three.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, um, if you can see this, this is, uh, shared. Now the application is actually running. This is data coming from sensors in Wisconsin Rapids. There's a number of different ways that it can be viewed. You have this screen, which is, um, what it's showing you is the sensor that Harrison and the sensor at Bonal. And the car is green. That means there's, um, no train there. If you want to verify that, you can click, you click on that, um, car and then you can actually see a view of the rail at that crossing. These other crossings are predicted values. There's no, there is no sensor there, but it will estimate, um, open and close times at those crossings as well. There's a map version, so it's the same data just viewed as a map. And, um, when there's a train, there's additional graphics here which show the location of the train. Uh, there's, this is really an audio-first application, so you can set it up so that the notifications, uh, come through as an audio. So even if you're not looking at it, like if you're driving, you don't want to really be looking at it, it will, there will be an audio notification which gives you the same message that's on the screen here. For example, crossing open at Harrison or, um, uh, train moving north at Harrison. So it'll give you that audio message. There's, uh, uh, in the Microsoft, there, there isn't a, a, um, notification. It shows up your notifications, but in the Apple and Android, it actually is a notification. So even if the app, even if this application is running in the background, notification will show up and we have, um, a, its own, own, um, for lack of, I can't remember what the right terminology, ringtone. So like you, if you have an, an Android application, you get an email, it'll bing. If you set the settings right, then in this application, when, when you get a notification, it'll make the sound of a rail crossing, um, bell. So you can differentiate rail crossing notifications from your email and other things like that. So there's that notification technology in here. In the settings, in, in this current version, and this is the reason why it's not in the store right now, is that you can, you can go to settings and select a whole bunch of other cities and see what, what, um, see the traffic there. And, uh, so we, we're in the process of changing that. So for the free available version, you can only see traffic that's near you and that was, that requested some of our customers. Uh, with the special paid version, you can see all of them. And, but then we collect more information about your identity, um, for security purposes. So, but the application is free to everybody. You can see all the information about the crossings in, in the city near you.
Joe, when you're talking roadside signage, um, are, are you talking digital awareness? Like overhead things, like that type of thing?
Yeah, they would be, um, I'm not sure if I've got a picture in the packet of things, but a, a digital variable message type of sign.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not all of them would need to be that, but certainly if, um, you know, if it's a critical location, you know, there could be a few of those provided at those locations. Otherwise, other en route, uh, type of navigation could be, as Kurt had mentioned, just a, a simple flashing light or some signage that would, um, accompanied with some signage to, uh, um, help vehicles navigate that alternative route.
So on, on the number of the sensors, um, obviously I would imagine every crossing, if, if we move forward with this plan, would, would have an added sensor. Would there be any additional sensors, anything maybe a certain distance away from the city for advanced warning or, or what does that look like?
Um, yeah, so ideally, uh, you could put some, uh, outside the city and of course we'd have to get some approvals from, from those municipalities for that, uh, location. But, uh, just to give you a heads up, we're also looking, we're also in contact with a number of the, of communities around to, and with the idea that we want to build a, um, a regional implementation. And the advantages to that are, first of all, sharing data, just like you described, but also in terms of funding, um, being able to put multiple people on, on a single grant would is helpful. So that's, I mean, that's the kind of thing we're, we're doing at other locations. So, so I guess just to answer your question directly, yes, it is helpful to have, um, sensors outside the city limit so that you can catch the tr- the through traffic coming through.
Joe, these six and eleven accidents, what, over the course of what time period was that?
What are you referencing?
On the characteristics, related characteristics summary, second page.
This was information that, that Kurt had provided, uh, rail traffic related characteristics summary. So Kurt, there was a question about the, the six accidents and eleven accidents that were noted in there as top accident locations.
Yep, those, those come from the Federal Railway Administration Accident Reports. And so we looked up the accident reports for all crossings in Wisconsin Rapids. About half the crossings have one or two accidents. That, that map showed the two that have sort of much higher accidents than everything else. So compared to one or two accidents, the, I think Second Street has something like eleven accidents and on industrial had six accident reports. So those seem to be more accident prone. And it's a little counterintuitive. We're actually working with Missouri. And what they've concluded in the, um, analysis throughout Missouri is that the rail crossings that have, um, the lowest amount of traffic have the highest amounts of, at, lowest amount of road traffic have the highest amount of rail accidents. It seems to be somewhat similar here. So on, on, uh, Grand Avenue, there are two accident reports in the last ten years. But these other locations which have, you know, pretty low traffic, um, in comparison, have much higher, higher rates. So I'm not sure what the explanation is for that, but it's just noted on there as, as the place where we have more accidents right now.
So those, that eleven and six number was over ten years? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, it roughly ten years, I think, yeah. I, I have to go back and check exactly. I don't recall.
Because I guess that's the bottom line of the, um, what concerns me the most is not how much people are inconvenienced by time and missing appointments and such. It's when we finally do have an ambulance that's stuck behind the train, then it's going to be a serious issue at some point. Thankfully, it hasn't happened yet. That's why we need to continue to have this discussion. Predictive mobility is the best way to help. Go ahead.
I do have some, oh, I'm sorry. I do have some information on that. Uh, I talked to the fire chief and he said despite the fact that there is two fire stations intentionally, one on each side of the track, they still get blocked by the train for various reasons, six to twelve times a year. And in the public survey that we did, um, there was actually respondents that, that commented that they were in an ambulance that was stopped by a train. The impetus for Milwaukee to purchase our system was their fire chief had, early in his career, watched a fire burn down in an apartment building while stuck on the other side of the track. And in downtown Milwaukee is where they installed this. If they turn the corner and then see the crossings blocked, they're stuck. They can't, they can't do anything. They're, they're stuck there. And this happened last week at one of the crossings we haven't, haven't, uh, got installed yet. The, there was a big warehouse fire and they got stuck at the crossing. So, um, they're adding more crossings to our solution there. So it does happen. I'll send a slide deck that shows some of that.
Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you. We appreciate the time. And if you could send those out to Joe and he can disperse it to the rest of us.
Yes, we'll send a slide deck and links to the application.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else on this?
So hypothetically, Joe, if council was in agreement, they wanted to move forward with predictive mobility, what type of action would you be looking for?
I guess, um, yeah, if, if there was an, an interest to pursue the, the current grant application, well, we've, I guess, pursue the grant project, um, that would be, I guess, it'd be imperative to know, um, soon if that's, if that's of interest to, um, to pursue at this time, to try to hit the September thirtieth date. Otherwise, even if the, the, the motion comes, um, in the near future, we can always decline this grant opportunity and reapply in the next grant opportunity for 2024.
I'll make a motion that we pursue alternate two, three for the application for the rail, on the rail study. I mean, just direct staff to pursue option two, three and continue forward with that. If that's what you're looking for, because then you can get a vote and see who, where we're at with that.
Yeah, I think that would satisfy it. Like I said, that agreement won't, um, won't be available until August with the DOT, but we could continue to try to line things up as if we're, um, going to try to hit that September thirtieth date.
Yeah, it's just going to be a motion to direct staff to pursue it. So that it'll, whatever that, you, when you pursue it, whatever you find out will just be reported back.
Okay.
Uh, two, three, so three. Motion to direct staff to pursue alternate two, three in the rail study. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Anything else then? Okay, great. Move on to item three. I don't have the agenda from the number, item three. Consider eliminating standing committees and having two council meetings per month. Patrick, since you brought this, feel free to begin this conversation.
Sure. The, I think we were just short a couple of people for the, the last meeting that we had. So I really don't want to go over everything that we had, had already discussed and rehash all that. I think that going with two meetings a month would be a benefit to the city. It would be a benefit to the citizens. It would be a benefit to the business owners who are expanding or new businesses that are coming into town. I don't know everything. I would think that this would be a, a good thing. I think it would be, uh, the proposal I made is very simple and straightforward. And I think this is, it's all around good. I did hear some negative, uh, feedback at the last meeting and about citizens not being able to voice their concerns. I think that this would give them ample time to voice their concerns if they have any concerns. So I would say that is kind of a moot point. That's all I had.
Your honor? Your honor.
So we have to leave in about ten minutes, so, um, I just want to give my thoughts. You know, my biggest concern is the length of time that, you know, you have a committee meeting, you go to council, ordinance doesn't pass unanimous, and it has to wait for another council meeting. I guess I started thinking, you know, there are benefits to the, the committee process, and committees kind of working through things and discussing things. My area of issue would be, and there's no, it's just how we set it up, but there's no requirement other than the local ordinance that requires us to have two readings of a ordinance or at a meeting. I think we go to one council meeting, or go to, take the ordinance to one council meeting, vote it up or vote it down at that meeting, and it's done, unless Robert's rules allow for ways to bring things back, and so, or it could be held over if it needs to be, but I think having it go to two separate council meetings, it's talked about in committee, it's talked about at council, I don't see a need to have it, there needs to be another council meeting to discuss if it's not unanimous. That's just my thoughts. It moves things along quickly, it still preserves the committee to do the work. My concern sometimes might be, if you look at some of the committee agendas, uh, we could have a long meeting, which is okay, cause that's what we're here to do, but if there's people waiting to speak, it could be a long meeting for those people. More intimidating of an environment for citizens to come in and speak and, and try to utilize that process. Just kind of my free-for-all thoughts on that. Thank you.
Anybody? Jake, looks like you want to speak.
Yeah, I'll go. I agree with what the mayor said, I think there's no reason that we shouldn't move to one reading of an ordinance. How we address that, would that be something referred to the legislative committee? Okay, so, I'll make a, I, I'll or someone can make a referral to take that up at the next legislative meeting. I was hoping, I mean, we'll find out tonight and who feels what on this. Has everybody seen Patrick's document? Has that been distributed as far as like what it entails? Okay, good. So I, I would hope that we would move forward with this, and I'll actually be motioning tonight to do so. We went over it a lot, like Patrick said, if, some folks weren't here, so, and some people might not have seen that meeting, but I think this meeting itself is a great example of the way our current government works, and that it's just slow. The meetings are spread out. If a, a business comes in and wants to get something done, it's spread over months because there's one common council meeting a month. If a resident is requesting something of their alderman to bring to a meeting, it's spread over months because it's going through committee, and then it's going to common council, and there's this whole process that really slows down what I would call any type of progress, uh, or changes that we do as a body. And if we were able to get to two council meetings a month, and whether it be one is HR and Public Works, and one's Finance, if we were able to go from twenty-four meetings over a two-year span in a term to forty-eight and not have to hold things over at a common council meeting and put it over another month, I feel like we'd get a lot more done for our residents. And I don't see how it wouldn't go that way. If we gotta sit longer at meetings, I'm fine with that. I think when people come in and speak to us, um, they mostly are doing so at common council meetings, some come into committee meetings, but when they come here and they speak at a common council meeting, they're able to come in and speak to their eight aldermen of Wisconsin Rapids. Sometimes you'll see them come into a committee meeting, speak to three of us, or however many are there, but three on the committee. And then whether it's scheduling, or it, what, it didn't pass there, or it passed and they think it's gonna pass here, they don't come to the common council meeting. So I think this really brings it all together and is more beneficial for the, the residents coming to speak once to all of us, um, us being able to move things along quicker. And the current system we have, I mean, this legislative meeting was over a month ago, and we're talking about it now, and this is an example of, this change itself is already taking long in this process to even happen. We had a common council meeting since then, and it, we couldn't even, we put this meeting out past that, so I think the, the evidence is there. It really is just a feeling of what the council as a whole wants to do. I think some of us want to do it, some of us don't. And I'd like to move this forward and just vote on it and see if it's something we're gonna do, or if we'll leave it as is, and I don't, I don't think we need to take it any further if it doesn't have support. So I'll let the discussion continue, and but when it's done, I'll be making a motion to move this forward for a vote to move to what Patrick has proposed here in the document.
Okay?
Tom could probably remember better than I, but we used to do two common council meetings, and we used to do the committee meetings also, and, and, and Tom could probably remember a lot of them better than I can, but usually there was one meeting that was about twenty minutes long because there was just nothing, and we'd all show up, get everything ready, and then we'd be done in twenty minutes because there was nothing. And that's what prompted us to go to the one council meeting a month. Just felt it was better use of people's time, um, being that we didn't have a lot on that one meeting, and I think part of that is because we handled everything in committee, and then you go to take it to council, well, then there's nothing for the other meeting. But I, Tom could probably remember better than I, but, but that's kind of how it worked back, back then.
Tom?
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a whole lot to say, but, uh, that's correct, Mayor. Technically, as we do it now, the committee meeting is where people come and speak. The council meeting is where the council. People can be recognized if so be, see fit, but technically, that's where the business, final business is taken care of. The committee is where people come and plead their case. At a council meeting, it should be that if, I guess, something brand new popped up, or it's just not to rehash the whole thing necessarily, amongst the council it is, but, um, I just think it's the opposite, I guess, of what I'm hearing, is that, um, there would be less participation by the citizens re, um, by getting away from the committee meetings. I think that's, that's where the, that's where the people, and I hear about the, this delay and delay, I don't know where all this delay is. I haven't seen too many emails or any that say we're holding up everything, other than speeches. Things move along, I think. Referral lists are fairly short compared to what they used to be. So I think the, the council, I think, has stayed on top of things, I think the committees have done their due diligence of going over things, and people can show up if they want to, to again plead their case, why for or why against something. I just, I, I, I'd be against it, uh, before anything would go forward if it was to do that, I would sure have to see, uh, really a plan laid out of how we're actually gonna pro, how it actually take place. It's just, uh, I just, I ju, I just don't know where we have been failing the people by delay, delay. If there's something that I've been missing, I guess I wish somebody would enlighten me with it. So I, you know, that's, uh, I guess where I am, I think, uh, most of you know that anyway, from, uh, what I've said in the past, uh, it's just, um, there was a point in time that we did have, uh, the committees, uh, all met on one night, which would, was, was good, but a couple of, we got to a point where a couple of the committees started taking longer, and how to fit that back in, so, uh, they have been meeting on different evenings, and that seems to have been working out. As luck would have it, I think some of the committee meetings have become shorter now, a little bit, so they could have maybe stayed on the same evening, but, uh, so anyway, I guess, you know, just like, I guess I'd like to see where we're at on this, I think, I guess you hear where, where I'm coming from, I, I just, uh, I just don't really see the need for it. We'll see where we go, I guess, so, thanks.
I guess I'll talk, excuse me. I'm not in favor of this, and, um, for, um, not necessarily the same reasons, I agree with a lot of what Tom just said. I think that the committee structure, it gives it, those committee members an opportunity of focus on that particular area during their term. During this year, my main focus is finance, cause that's the committee I'm on. I go to all the other committee meetings. And I do feel that during that year, we do have an area of expertise, I guess is the best way to describe it, that we're responsible for. And, um, and in the past, when, even if I was opposed to an issue, I would always wanted to vote it through, so it went to council, so we could hash it out with everybody else. Because I'm not necessar, for instance, I'm on finance, and so what HR's doing, I'll go and listen to the three people during the HR meeting, what they're doing, and get as much, um, input direct from that meeting, but then when it comes to council, then I make a decision as, as the group. And, um, I continue to think that that's the best way to structure this, and I do feel that we could end up with, if we go to the, if we move the entire, particularly finance, for instance, and I guess finance and Public Works, those two, if all eight of us did a Public Works meeting, it could be a pretty darn long meeting if we focused on that. I think we do cut to the chase on a lot of the smaller issues, whether we need a stop sign at the corner of such and such and such and such. I don't see us wanting to spend hours on that at, um, at a council meeting. It seems like that can be brought to us and streamlined. That's my feeling, so I'm, um, opposed to that, opposed to this for that reason, I just believe the committees are, that I, I'd like the committee structure, and I like that we have that specific responsibility during our, our one year. Thanks.
I'll add my comments to this, I guess. As my time is, as an older person, I've, I think you can make arguments on both sides of this, but I think one, one thing that has been consistent is, is folks that maybe are not up to speed on some of these committee meetings, and we end up rehashing the entire argument at a council meeting. I think a lot of time could be saved if we have participation by every council member on these, on these committee issues. And not only that, but you're getting the information firsthand in lieu, I mean, obviously we have technology, we can watch these videos, I mean, that's your prerogative if you decide to or not, right? But I think there's a lot of value to receiving that information firsthand, and not every older person makes every committee meeting, it's just the way it is. So to me, I'm intrigued by this, and I would be, I would be willing to give it a trial run just to see, but I, my mind is not made up currently. That's all I've got.
Patrick?
I'm open to a, a trial run of this, if, if that's what it takes, um, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But I think what you had just stated is exactly, um, my thoughts on, on it, where you're rehashing everything that happened, and if you didn't, you're just voting on something that you'd never really seen, you're just trusting the, the committee. I do know for a fact that there's been times that people have passed things through committee, so it gets to come, council, and then council just votes yes on it. There's no discussion on it, and, and I think that's really doing a disservice to the citizens of Wisconsin Rapids.
Yeah?
I think what I've heard, uh, was talked about a little bit is like time, and I don't necessarily, in my experience, have the time to make all the meetings, all the committee meetings that are set up, and do the televised stuff. And so if we're meeting twice a month as a, as the whole committee, I feel like it's gonna mainstream the time for one, you know, one person, for all of us, but for any single person that's trying to get to all the committee meetings, or watch all of the videos, or whatever it is, I would much rather focus my attention on the two meetings a month and give my attention to it, so that we're not passing stuff through that, usually if it, if it's a concern, like, it comes to the forefront, I, I get that, but, but I think it would be good for all of us to be able to focus on every issue that's coming across the city and vote on it accordingly, or if we need to table it till the next one, we're tabling it to two weeks, we're not tabling it for another month. I have seen a few things that have dragged on and on. I, I don't, again, I don't know if it brings the city to a halt, but I think, yeah, we don't want to go so fast that we're making mistakes that we could have foreseen, but we want to go fast enough that a city like us, who should want to be on kind of the cutting edge of progress, and trying to move from what we were to what we're going to be, um, I think we should want to move faster. And I do, I, I have heard people ask about, how am I gonna have a chance to speak? Usually when people come, that I've seen in my experience, when people come to the committee meeting and they need to, to get their point across, well, then they also have to come to the city council meeting because they need to get their point across to everyone, so they're doing it twice. And then we might table it again, or, or push it off first, so then it goes into next month. So I, I see a lot of upside to this, and I, I would vote for it.
I'm sorry, I, I've forgotten, and I don't have it in front of me, Patrick, you have it, so who sets the agenda in this scenario then? Says now it's the committee chair, or who sets the?
Well, the agenda is set by the mayor, any, this was discussed at that meeting.
I, I remember, I just wanted to, I want it to be laid out again.
Okay, so the mayor sets the agenda, and items may be brought forth by any department head or council member to be voted on through a referral process, and, and then it can be voted on, and then that can go on to the next meeting, which is just two weeks later.
Okay. Jay?
So I don't disagree, there, there may be some value to this, but I just want to hit a few highlights that we've probably talked about before. First of all, I keep hearing about how slow things are going, we have had special council meetings for things that need to be pushed through, and that's not, not been that big a deal. I guess my second point is, I have talked to a hand- I guess my second point is, I have talked to a handful of staff, and I, I can tell you the majority of the staff that I've spoken to was not too excited about this structure, so. I mean, we may be adding meeting time for them as well. I mean, a lot of these guys only have to be to one, now they may have to be to two. And I guess my last point is, regardless of what you're doing now, we may be making decisions based on information that we're getting that night. It's gonna be, here it is, this is it, decide. And the fact that I think these meetings are gonna drag out for a little bit, my fear is, is some of these decisions that we're gonna be made, making, are gonna be made just to get things over with and keep things moving, so. Those are my comments. I don't think I'm in favor of this right now either. Thank you.
Jay, could you expand a little further on what the concern, you know, specific concerns were from the employees?
I don't know that was anything specific. I think it was, they're comfortable in the structure they're in, they're, they're in right now. They think the structure that we have is working well. Nothing specific, I don't know if anybody here would like to speak to it. We do have elected officials that, I mean, are kind of gonna be affected by this as well, so.
Sure.
I do have a question for Sue. Sue, aren't there certain things that are by ordinance passed at committee level? And what do we do with those items?
Well, the ordinance would need to be changed. I provided you, I just kind of went through the, our ordinances with examples of all of the, uh... The first page just lists basically what each standing committee does by ordinance, and then just all of the other things and the other parts of the ordinance where a committee might hear, have a hearing on something, or might be the final determiner of something, or might be the first step, and then the council is the second step. So there's nothing, there's no law, you know, requiring the commit, standing committees, but our ordinances do provide for them, and then we would have to clean up all of those areas where it states that the standing committee, you know, one standing committee or another does something. It would probably just be the council as a whole. But there are some, uh, I can think of licenses, some license situations, some utility, like a stormwater utility fee hearing where you really should provide a, an appeal process, and, and a lot of those basically had maybe the public works committee and then an appeal to the council. So there would have to come up with some way to, you know, maybe it's the public works superintendent or the city engineer is the first step, and then the council is the second. But some of those, that should probably have an appellate procedure. We'll have to figure out how, there would have to be a two-step process somehow before it got to council then, if the council was, if there weren't, wasn't a standing committee. But yeah, all of those would, would need to be changed. And then we also have collective bargaining agreements and personnel policies that provide that HR committee does certain things, so then those would need to be changed also.
Thank you, Sue. I do have some concerns about going to two meetings a month, from my perspective, from the clerk's office perspective, and of course, whatever you guys decide will, will make happen. But, um, right now, it takes about two weeks to put a council packet together and get it, all the information in and approved by the mayor and out the door. If the mayor has to approve every single agenda item, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what that process looks like. So you'll send it to the mayor, he approves it, and then he gives it to me. Or are the department heads going to be sending me agenda items like they, like they would if they're sending an agenda to me, and then I would compile that into a council agenda? This year is not necessarily an issue, but starting next year, starting in February, I have six elections in 14 months. And just so you understand about elections, I'm in the middle of one election while I'm starting the next one, and then I'm finishing that election while I'm also in the process of this one. And so from a time standpoint in the clerk's office, that just doubled the workload, which again, if we, if that's what you decide to do, we'll go ahead and do it. But if I don't tell you that that is gonna take a lot of my time, I'll be spending four weeks out of the month doing council agendas, which will take us away from elections and alcohol licensing and board review and all of the other things that we do, so just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if I could ask, Jennifer, so what does it look like now with, uh, because you spend the first two, two weeks, I would assume, on the committee agendas, but then you're able, in the second two weeks, compile those into the bulk of the agenda for the council?
So right now, when I get committee agendas in, I, there's, there are processes that I go through to publish those and make them available to all of you and to the public. It takes about between 20 and 25 minutes to process one agenda. That's one agenda and packet. And then I take those agendas, and I do, I do compile it into the council agenda. So if I get the public works agenda, I publish that, and then I also copy and paste it into the council agenda. And then the, obviously, the committees will give me the minutes for those, and I compile that into the council minutes. So now all of the minutes fall on me, and the agenda would then fall on me, so that's just more time-consuming. I'm not taking somebody else's minutes and putting it into a document and making it pretty. I'm now responsible for all of the, all of the information that goes in the agenda, the packet and the minutes, and I'm just saying that I don't know that next year we're gonna have time to do all of that. It depends on what it looks like. I mean, I'm sure there's a way we can work through this. It would be helpful to me if the, if the department heads could send their agenda with, it doesn't have to be on an agenda form like this, but, okay, here are the 10 items that we want considered at the council meeting, okay? Items one through 10. Mayor says yes, I put that into the, into the council agenda as, here are the public works items, okay? That, that would be a time saver right there for me, because you're giving me, the department has is giving me that information, and I'm just compiling it. I'm not having to pull it from, you know, different sources. It doesn't have to go, I mean, and the department head can still send it to the mayor for approval. And then he forwards it to me and says, these are good, put it in. So that, I think, would be very helpful if I could get it, instead of getting it from eight council members and all the different departments, I think that would be helpful, so.
That's if we change it, you're saying?
If you change it, yeah, yeah. I mean, we'll find a way to do it, I'm just trying to figure out the best way and any objections or anything that would hinder this being a smooth process. But I think if we could do it that way, so it's not just piecemeal. Because if I get 400 emails about a council agenda, you know, that's hard to keep track of all that stuff while I'm in the middle of everything else. The other thing is, and again, it's not about me, I get that. But if I don't bring up the concerns, then you guys won't know. The other thing was, I can't think of it, I just lost my train of thought. I'll think of it, and I'll let you know.
Sorry, Jay, can I come back to you again and just, because, because you had brought up that the department heads were talking about they'd have to come to two meetings, but most of them come to our, the, the council meeting and the committee meeting, so they're already going to two meetings, right? What changes?
Well, what changes is typically our committee meetings are later in the afternoon, and then, you know, normal, normal meetings, you're home by supper time, early evening. I think under the structure that we have, we can be prepared to be here till probably eight, nine o'clock every night. So my suggestion would be is go talk to some of the staff and see how they feel about it. I mean, I, I have talked to probably, I can think of four off the top of my head. The closest thing to support for this I got was, it didn't matter to them, but three were not overly excited about it, so. I would suggest going, talk to them for yourself.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you, I thought of what I was gonna say. So we're proposing having like two of the, the committees, standing committees in the first month, and then the balance in the second, or first meeting and the balance in the second one? Okay, so let's say that finance and property is in the second meeting, and something pops up between that meeting and the next first meeting, which would be a different, you know, the finance and property isn't considered at that meeting. What are we doing with that item? Is it waiting for the second meeting, or is it gonna be considered at the first meeting? In which case, that's gonna happen all the time, so then we might, might as well just do all of them all the time. That didn't come out right, but I think you know what I mean.
I understand what you're saying.
Yep, yep.
I think it would be best to have department heads from like public works and HR in the first meeting, and then the others in the second meeting. If something, this is what it's set up for, though. If something, if somebody has something that pops up, they can address the council. Everybody gets a vote, everybody is equal, so it's not like a committee that you go to that you're not a part of, that you have questions about, you can't make any motions. But here, it's a council meeting, you can make motions, everybody is equal here. And I did talk with a staff about it. I talked with Joe Eichsted, he said that he hadn't talked with Jay at all on this, but he, he didn't say yes or no, he didn't say, no, this is a horrible idea. So I haven't really talked to any other staff, but I would, I would think that any department head that is looking out for the citizens of Wisconsin Rapids and doing their job, they'd be happy to come to an extra meeting to get something done more quickly. So, that's all.
So if I'm understanding correctly, let's say finance is at the second meeting of the month. Something comes up that's urgent, like it's a grant or something like that. So then it would go to the first meeting of the month to see if you guys would approve hearing it, but then it's not on the agenda, so then it has to go to the second meeting anyway. So I guess I'm confused as to how... So if I, let's say I have a grant I want to apply for, that goes to finance and property, but we just had the finance and property committee meeting, and we've got a deadline that's before the next time finance and property's supposed to meet. So when does council consider hearing it at a, at the other meeting? Do you understand what I'm saying? Because if you, if, if they take it up at the first meeting, whether to hear it or not, well, then the next time they meet is gonna be the second meeting anyway. Am I not understanding?
Yeah, I think there's some confusion, and I think this is getting swayed away from... This is all stuff we already do. So in your example, the common council meetings are already, agenda's already set by the mayor. So these two common council meetings, Shane would still be able to add that to the next meeting. So we, we go to a, this first meeting of the month, and that item isn't ready or, or it's urgent, well, nothing would change in how we would act on it, Shane would add it to the agenda for the next one. Or we could, as a council, take it up and add it. This is, we're, we're talking about all these different things, I mean, it still stands as is, like, we are having committee meetings once a month, all to lead up to one common council meeting. Things are getting held over then another month, that, well, we are right now. This would just put two meetings a month and get rid of the rest, so if something does need to be changed or done, it's in two weeks, not a month. Yeah.
I'm still trying to understand. So my finance and property agenda item, I missed the second meeting where finance and property items are taken up. Okay, so I go to the mayor and I say, hey, I have this, this meeting item that the deadline for this is prior to the next finance and property meeting. So the, the second meeting is when it would normally be taken up, but I need this considered at the first meeting. So then what do we do with that item, because?
So you're reading these as like the guidance of that the first meeting is public works and HR, and the second is finance and property, that those are only gonna occur? Those, that'll be it? Those are the only things that happen at the common council meeting?
No, what I'm saying is that Patrick was saying that the council could decide whether to take up those items at a different meeting. So that's fine, so I missed my finance meeting.
But it also said, it starts with the agenda items are set by the mayor.
Right, but you said we, that the council could, I'm just trying to figure out from a, from a standpoint of...
That's more the referral basis of, of we're bringing a referral right now. Right now, it could go to finance.
So it could still go, I could still give it to the mayor, and he could still say, yep, you can take that up at the first meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's all I needed, because I gotta figure out how this is gonna work out from my end of it. Like, what do I do with these things? What am I author, what would I be authorized to say yes to, and what goes on the agenda as a referral, and what? So I'm just trying to figure it all out, so that if we do this, that I know what my part of it is. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
It ju, it just flows everything up, so instead of there being committee meetings, and if I put a referral in, right now, it's not going to be finalized until the third Tuesday in July, if I put it in right now, because the committee meetings have already happened. So in this scenario, there's common council meetings twice a month. So there would be one, I think it says on the first Tuesday of the month. That item could be taken up then. My referral would have to be decided by Shane or the council to, come on. So no one's just like sending referrals in, and we're taking up everything. That's kind of where the...
Okay.
Deciding, the council members would vote, like if I bring something that we're gonna do it in two weeks, or we're not gonna do it in two weeks. That's where that comes in.
Perfect, thank you, appreciate the clarification.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be too much work than what's being done now. I think it gets rid of a lot of the, the rehashing. I understand, you know, there might be some adjustment, but there's, how many agendas being made right now per month? You know, this brings it to two. There's gonna be some adjustment, and that's why it's been suggested there's a trial period. I started this off, I, I think there's gonna be people in favor and people opposed, and that we would, I would read a motion so that we can figure this out tonight, and it's, we either do it or we don't. So I, I guess I just need, I think everybody's had a chance to speak in their position. I would make the motion, but Sue, I would look for how exactly you want me to read it, or Patrick, if you would...
Actually, can we make a motion with, because we don't have a tiebreaker now, because the mayor's not here, correct?
We can tie and bring it to common council.
Right, and you expect this to go to council tomorrow night as an actual, like, and then you're gonna vote tomorrow night on it?
We might not, because what'll happen, and this is what happens at committee meetings, is we're gonna rehash again tomorrow night. So if, if there's not support for it tonight, I don't plan on bringing this item up again tomorrow. I mean, I'm not gonna speak on it, because I already know.
So you're doing a straw poll?
Pretty much, essentially, because what...
I mean, that's what, in effect, that's what you're doing, because we're...
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
Because there's no, you're saying if there's no, if there's not enough support to bring it up tomorrow night, it's a straw poll.
I'm doing a formal straw poll with, via Robert's rules, yeah, because I, I wouldn't talk about this tomorrow if it fails 5-3. It sounds like the mayor might not, he said his thoughts, I don't think he strongly opposed or went against, but he would be the tiebreaker on it then. But if it fails tonight, I have nothing to say tomorrow, because it failed 24 hours before. So it is what it is, if it fails, if it passes, then, um, make the same motion tomorrow. But it would be going into rule then. So, yeah, that's what I would plan to do, is make a motion to see where the support is. Would you like to read it, and, uh, is it's your word?
Now, I think what we should do, if, if this does pass, I think that, um, we should start in August, because the Fourth of July is the first Tuesday in, in July.
Right, you're gonna, we're gonna probably have about 35 ordinances to change, so. It's not, and a, and a trial run is, I don't know how that is, I mean, going to work, because we're, we're basically changing the whole legislative process for, you know, a, a bunch of things, so. I mean, I don't know if the trial, when it was gonna be included in your referral or whatever, but it, yeah, it's, nothing's gonna happen tomorrow night. And I think it's gonna be more of a, a directing staff to, you know, present an ordinance that says, I, you know, whatever you want it to say, but, and I...
ordinance that says I, you know, whatever you want it to say, but, and I, I mean, I guess I'm just saying that this is, it's more complicated than, than, and especially when we don't have the time to let the, let the public know exactly what it is that you would, like the action that you're taking tomorrow night.
It's, it's been five weeks, I think.
Well, what, what is on the agenda that would show, where it just says discussion? Doesn't it say? I mean, I, I, there's not an ordinance, there's not an ordinance that's, that's complete and will be complete by tomorrow night.
So you would add direct staff to...
Yeah, and then it, then come, answer all those questions of how you want all of this handled with, with...
Well, I have some wording written.
Okay.
I have some wording written here that, I mean, change any verbiage in the ordinances from committee to council.
I, I didn't know if you were still, okay, Tom.
I think part of what we're just seeing is things will be brought before the council, and as people like to say, without something being, being vetted. To change something like this, I guess if you'd listen to what Sue just said, you just don't say, we're going to change and we're going to, oh, because of the Fourth of July, it's on a Tuesday, we'll wait till August. There's a lot of things that has to be done to put this into motion, to make it happen. And verbiage, to get rid of all whatever, that takes time to do. Where does the referral process go? The staff, the staff is our, whatever, ones that research what has to be done. So if somebody thinks that I want to meet, this on my jet, or on the next agenda, this may involve two months of study. It may entail coning traffic, coning trains. HR handles a whole heck of a lot of different things. I shouldn't say a whole lot of different things, but it's another cat. And to think that we're going to throw this into warp speed and have this all changed and operating and the public to know, and we won't do it till August because we have a holiday. I think the thought that is put into this maybe entails some maybe consideration to make a decision tonight. Again, on the, we're, whims for the moment, whatever, shows how this council just wants to ramrod things through. I get the feeling that the council is more inconvenienced than the public. This has got to rank up with one of the most ridiculous things I've ever seen. No planning. Things have to be done and we just brush it aside. I've said it too many times, get real people, get real. Maybe we need real people. This is, you just don't say, I'm going to drive an electric car before they're invented. Planning might be there, how we do this, but there's planning. This is just something that's thrown out there. And I still fail to see where we have, where this is such a slow process. And if something does have to get referred back to another month, that's the process. You're going to see a lot of mistakes made with this ramrod deal that's being presented. You may not recognize them in the first couple, few months after something, give it a couple I have a, a lot of things that have hap, haven't come along in the recent technology age. One thing that's been left out of it is people. Keep that in mind. We work for the people. It's not us to try to speed things up and whatever. Biggest complaint probably that people have is they don't get, actually a committee voted against what they wanted to have done. Or the council. Or they went against the not in my backyard situation. So I just, I, I, I fail to see how this, the agenda seems like, eh, it's there. What's he going to do? Write down 15 items? Without Joe, Paul, and Public Works, Street Department, Ryan, HR, without them researching anything? This is just going to be thrown on the agenda to make a decision? That's why we go through the committee process. Then it comes to the council. And I guess some people don't like it may be rehashed. That's what it's for. Otherwise, I can see you're taking the public out. You're making it more convenient maybe for us. And if they only have to come once instead of twice? In reality, I think very few of the ones come the second time to council meeting. That doesn't mean they don't. But the majority of people don't come the second time. Actually, it's gotten to the point that we've discouraged people, I think, from coming to the committee meetings. But I think to get back to the main thing is that just because you want something on the agenda, there has to be research that goes into it. Probably everything. You can't put something on the agenda that I want to stop signing somewhere without that study being done. What are you going to back it up with? So I, it's just, I, you know, it's a guy, I guess listening, it's kind of riled some things up here, but it's a, it's nice to just write something like this, but listen to what's being said. Ordinance's got to be changed. That doesn't happen overnight. The whole thing would have to be, has to be rewritten, so we can read what's going to happen. You can't vote on something tonight. I don't see that the case has been made that we proceed with it. Until such time as something is, that it's all gone through, here's what has to be done. What's, what's a real timeframe when something could take place? Staff has things to do, so it, it'd just be, you know, there has to be a timeframe when they can realistically get something done to present to us. So I, that's just, I guess I'll let it go with that, because I just, I just think there's, there's too many things that haven't been thought of, resolved, I don't think even listened to, of what realistically has to be done. Jump into something that quick, like that, without it all being whatever, vetted, taken care of, whatever, so.
Matt, just real quick, I just want to ask Jennifer a question, and I'll go to you. Again, remind me, what's the timeframe that you need an item before it goes to committee?
It's typically a week before.
So, so then in, in fact, in this case, then you would need, you would have to be working on that a week ahead of the first meeting and a week ahead of the second meeting?
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that part. That's what I thought. It was a week, right? Okay, go ahead, Matt, sorry.
It's actually a week and a day.
A week and a day.
Because if we have it on Tuesday, the deadline is Monday for the agenda items. Then I compile that, and I give it to the mayor and Sue Scholl to review and for the mayor's approval. And then, then I need to gather all of the packet items for that. So, it gives me time to get it out.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I just, the word ramrotting just keeps going through my head over and over again. I'm not quite sure what, what you mean by that, in the sense of, I don't, unless I'm taking this wrong, I don't think anybody's trying to ramrod anything down. I think, I think we're allowed to have these conversations to talk about it, because as far as I understand, what the mayor said is it used to be this way. So, you know, I'm not...
It used to, there used to be, there always was standing committees.
Okay.
And then there were two meet, two council meetings a month in addition to the standing committees.
Okay, so, thank you. So then, why is it that, I mean, okay, we have our committee meeting, so on this, on the third Tuesday, when we'd be meeting for this meeting, why is it that we can't keep committees that are in charge of the agenda for that night, and we do them on that night? We work through them together as a whole, but we organize it in such a way that we're, that we're doing it at the same time, instead of over here and over here and trying to screw up, you know, three, three days of our time schedule? We'd still have two days, which is what the people in favor of this want. They want two days to do this. And I feel like there's a way to do it, where we don't have to. If, if what we're saying, we're going to throw all the ordinances into chaos, then why can't we figure out a way to still work together as a council, but have the people who are in charge of the committees, so that we can have the committees done too at the same time? Like, there is a way to do that. So I guess, you know, I'm willing to have that conversation. I, I do get a sense that we are trying to plow through this right now. I'm, I'm getting a little bit of that sense. And my sense on the other side is I don't feel like we necessarily have to. Because right now, nothing's really changing, and, and I'm not sure, but why it is that, like, all of a sudden there's this, there's a fear, there's a fear behind it, maybe, or of, of what we're moving towards. And maybe we need to take a second to just try to figure that out. But that's, that's my thought. Isn't there a possibility of being able to keep the committees intact, but still have one, two meetings, one where the committees are focused on being committees? I mean, it's the same thing as we're doing now. We're just changing terminology a little bit, but we're not throwing things into chaos, I guess. Not that chaos is coming, but...
Jake had his hand up first.
I've been, I've been trying to...
He's got longer, right?
...do this for a while, because...
He's got longer.
I wa, I was going to make a motion to avoid any unnecessary discussion if it doesn't have support. And then, we rehashed an entire committee meeting from May 1st, and it's June 19th, which I think proves the point. But if not, I mean, let's, I'm going to make a motion to direct staff to lay out what it would, how do you, how should I word this? I'm going to make a motion to direct staff to report to council what ordinances need to be changed for a trial of a, two common council meetings a month from August to April under the guidelines that are written in the agenda.
Can you please send me that? That motion? You said you had it written down? Oh, I thought you said you had it.
No, I had verbiage written down that we, in all these ordinances, the big numbers being thrown out, this is big and scary, 35 ordinances. Change the wording from, it goes to HR committee, Public Works committee, to council. That's it, just change the wording. I just said it.
I just, it was a long motion, I didn't get all of it. That's why I thought you said you had it...
No, that last part wasn't the motion.
Right. I, I'm just trying to capture, Jake, I'm just trying to capture the motion, that's all.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll say it again.
Okay, thank you.
I should have wrote it down. Motion to direct staff to report to council the ordinances that need to be addressed to move to two common council meetings per month as proposed in tonight's agenda. And if it fails, then we fail, done.
Jake?
I guess I just have a question, and I'm look, not looking for an answer right now, but, you know, we've got the budget coming up pretty soon, and I'm wondering what that process is going to look like. You know, we've got, I think last year we did committee of the whole meetings, correct?
Mm-hmm.
What's that process going to look like? Is it going to change? Is it going to stay the same? I, I think it's just something to consider. That's probably our busiest time of year, so, thanks.
I'll second the motion, but I really don't know that, I would think like Jay has shown that he doesn't really support it now, he might be on the fence, but I would think somebody like him would want to know what ordinances would change. So I don't know if that's really a, a good indication. So I'll second.
Let me bring it back.
Okay, any further discussion then? So the motion is to direct staff is what needs to be changed, is it?
That, that's correct. And again, this will have to be confirmed to, at tomorrow's council meeting, because this is a committee meeting of the whole. So, not finalizing anything, as you called it earlier, more of a straw poll, because if this doesn't have support, I don't see the point in rehashing a committee meeting from May 1st about this exact issue, where the same things were said here on June 19th. If it doesn't have support, it fails, we do what we're doing. I don't, I just don't see the point in continuing on with this. And then therefore the motion... And then therefore the motion, it will be brought up again tomorrow if it passes for final approval. If it fails, I'm not speaking on it tomorrow.
Does that make sense to everybody then?
Sue, are you able to compile that list by tomorrow?
No, the motion's just-
She wouldn't have to. This is, the, the action for her to be directed to would be finalized at tomorrow's meeting. It's not a motion tonight to have it finalized by tomorrow's meeting. Because the mo-, the motion is to direct staff, so it would be final tomorrow.
Yeah, he's basically doing a straw poll. Well, no, it's a motion to direct staff, so it's not technically a straw poll, so, but that's kinda what it is. Pardon? No. Um, no, we just vote.
Again, I would just say the motion is not to go to these. It's to direct staff to bring a report to us of what we'd have to change for that. Because this is going to tell us if we have support of it or not. So if we don't have support of it, we're done, we dispose of the item.
Does that make sense from this end, Sue?
Yes, I guess, I mean, I, so you just want me to put ordinance numbers on what I gave you?
No, what?
Or, no, but I mean, I, well, I'm just asking what, if, if that's what you are gonna decide tomorrow, let's say. Well, I'll wait till tomorrow then. Well, I, yeah, okay. So Sue, the question was if he just wanted a show of hands and withdraw the motion, just to see where the support is, or?
I don't, I'm, I guess, I mean, in order to move anything or refer anything to the council, there's gonna have to be formal action, so.
Yeah, I'm not-
Okay, so, I guess, any further discussion then? So um, so all in favor of the motion as it stands, which would be to direct council, or direct council, direct staff to- Sure, we can do a roll call vote.
Aye.
Nay?
Aye.
No.
Yes.
There's not interest in this, I don't wanna put staff, make them jump through hoops and do a bunch of extra work for, no.